Welcome to All Things Moore County, Moore County's weekly radio show highlighting the many facets of the Sand Hills. That includes real estate, lifestyle, community and neighborhoods. And now from Four Properties, here's your host, Bill Sahadi.
Good morning. Welcome to the talk show, All Things Moore County. We're approaching Election Day on November the 5th. And today, our show is not going to be called All Things Moore County. It's going to be called All Things Pinehurst and All Things Southern Pines. We have the privilege of speaking with the mayoral candidates and the council member candidates for both towns. And we're going to start the show speaking with John Strickland, who is running for mayor of Pinehurst. And each candidate's going to have five minutes to give us an overview of their positions, their inspirations, their overviews. And John, good morning.
Good morning to you, Bill, and thanks to everyone who's listening this morning.
Yeah, we'd love to hear from you and what it is running for mayor means to you and what you are hoping for for the next few years.
Thank you very much. I'm John Strickland, and I'm a candidate for mayor. My experience in banking and in Pinehurst government has provided me with valuable credentials that will allow me to successfully respond to the needs of our citizens, to build a consensus in decision-making with my council colleagues, and to support our village staff who implement those policies. I'm retired, and as has been the case in my earlier responsibilities with the village council, village commissions, and two not-for-profit foundations with whom I serve, I have the time to commit to being your mayor. If you elect me, you will receive my full-time attention to preserve and enhance the special character of our community and all of our neighborhoods, to manage growth wisely and responsibly, to ensure the vitality of our local businesses, to protect our rural areas and the long-leaf pine ecosystem in which we live, and to optimize the use of our financial resources. To ensure these goals are met, I will be reaching out to First Health, Pinehurst Resort, Moore County, and our neighboring towns of Foxfire, Whispering Pines, Southern Pines, and Aberdeen to take advantage of shared opportunities and to solve shared problems. Here are some issues I'd like to work on. One, growth and the traffic it brings. Some people are for growth, and others are against it. I'm not anti-growth, but I am for well-planned and smart growth, the type of growth that will add tangible benefits to our citizens' quality of life and will not press on Pinehurst's financial strength. A possible solution is the Long Range Plan, which is now in final review by the village council. This plan needs to accurately reflect the broadly-based concern about growth among our citizens. Issue number two, infrastructure. By that I mean maintaining it and investing in it and determining what it can support, specifically our Pinehurst roads and streets, state roads, water, sewer, stormwater, fire, police, and school-related demands. I include consideration of the traffic congestion we now have. A solution, and none of these are easily attained, but they include continued close work with our regional Department of Transportation office to promote small-scale, relatively inexpensive projects that might help the flow of traffic, and working with more county utilities to ensure well-functioning and adequate water and sewer services into the future, and always keeping our services at the highest level. And issue number three is just meeting all the needs of our residents, whether they are six, thirty-six, sixty-six, and eighty-six. When capital investment is requested to support those needs, we must assure that a thorough analysis of the startup, short-term, and long-term costs is done, and then explain to the public during the decision-making process. Now, details about my background can be found on my website, stricklandforpinehurst.com. So rather than go into those, I would like to briefly outline what I think you want to know about my philosophy of governing, what I think are the key factors for a mayor to have in mind while working with citizens, the village staff, and other members of the village council. I believe the essence of Pinehurst, that special character or ambiance, as we like to say, is made up of several components. Component number one is our variety of comfortable but different neighborhoods in this residential resort professional town. Component number two is our architectural landscape design heritage based on the work of Olmsted, Manning, and Ross. Component number three is our successful independent retailers that reside in our village core and other shopping districts, serving the needs of our residents as well as resort guests and other visitors. Component number four is the rural areas that surround us and the long-leaf pine ecosystem in which we live. And component number five is accessible and responsible government. If it becomes evident that we are not maintaining a high level of stewardship in one or another of these components, or that they are under threat, I will work with the staff and my council colleagues to make it right. And while I'm a third-generation citizen of Pinehurst, my daughter, son-in-law, and my grandchildren who now live in Pinehurst remind me every day that we're living in the 21st century. So as your mayor, I'm invested in the future. Finally, I'd like to leave you with this thought. I will try to ensure that we in village government are not just doing things right, but are doing the right things. That's not just doing things right, but always doing the right things. Thank you for your time. I look for your vote in early voting or on November 5th.
John Strickland, thank you so much for coming in and talking with us. Appreciate it. Our next candidate for mayor of Pinehurst is Claire Berggren. Claire, good morning.
Good morning, Bill.
Thank you for joining us.
Glad to be here.
Would love to hear from you as to your reasons for running, your positions, your overview, your inspirations.
That's a whole lot to cover.
You can do it.
Alrighty, we'll start here. Thanks, first of all, for arranging this and WEEB to provide voters with more insight to the candidates running for election this November. "Hi, Pinehurst voters. I've got five minutes to talk with you and share my reasons for wanting to represent you as your mayor." This is the Claire for Mayor infomercial. And yes, I'm going to use notes to keep me on track and make sure I cover all the questions and topics that we need to cover. As all candidates have been moving through our campaign schedules and sharing our views on numerous topics, I want to begin with how important your participation is for the future of your towns and villages. I want to impress, suggest, and encourage you to vote in this election. Generally, these off-cycle elections don't draw the interest like those that are coming up in the next year. However, your vote in local elections has more direct impact on your everyday life than any other. So please, get to know your candidates, decide who you want to represent you, and let your voice be heard through your vote on November 5th, 2019. You are listening to this program a few days before Election Day. Use the information you hear and share it with your friends and neighbors. Now here's the infomercial. "Since moving to Pinehurst in 2000 from Atlanta, Georgia, and as a non-retiree, I continued my career as a businessperson in the technology industry. My territory was the Carolinas, which gave me the opportunity to travel and learn more about why our area is so desirable as a place to live, work, and play. My understanding of the Pinehurst brand was greatly expanded. I immersed myself in various activities and organizations in and around Pinehurst because I wanted to be more connected and contribute to the community. I felt safe, and with the natural beauty around me, I understood the vision Mr. Tufts began pursuing over 100 years ago. Now, my backstory goes to the days when my father was stationed at Fort Bragg. I was just beginning elementary school. While we lived there, we would visit the Pinehurst area, and those memories of the pine trees and the quaint shops imprinted themselves on me, so that when I did have a chance to purchase property in Pinehurst, those memories came back to me, and I knew I came back home. Since 2000, my career transitioned to more local endeavors that eventually led me to the decision to run for mayor. I became a licensed real estate broker and still maintain that license. Being a broker provided me with insight into the personalities of each neighborhood that comprised the totality of Pinehurst. Each neighborhood reflects a point in time, and in a way, each has a chapter in the history of what and why Pinehurst is what it is today. Then I had the opportunity to become part of one of our most important local economic engines, tourism. As we all know, golf and its associated lifestyle are likely at least part of the reason we're all here now. So for 11 years, I was the Director of Marketing for the Moore County Tourism Authority, which provided another level of connection to understanding Pinehurst and its place in the tourism industry within North Carolina, the region, and beyond. Tourism also tightly connects us to our neighboring municipalities in one way or another, and the resort is one of our most important strategic partners. All these experiences provided opportunities to meet people where I could use my knowledge and skills to support organizations like Friend to Friend, Sister Cities, and the Given Tufts Library as a board member. I've also served as a tutor for the Moore County Literacy Council. I grew up in a family of people who believed in public service. My father and brother were in the military, Marine Corps and Navy. My mother is a retired teacher, so when the stars aligned for my call to public service, I ran for a seat on the Pinehurst Council in 2013, and won as a writing candidate. I served a four-year term and loved every aspect of that role, from working with a talented staff to understanding the processes of municipal government, to listening to residents' concerns and opinions, no matter how similar or different they were from mine. And I did meet and marry a great guy who brought three children into my life. Having a family definitely broadened my perspective about schools, safety, family activities, and time management. It also planted the seed within me of considering the legacy I would like to leave for them. That's my motivation. I'm here to ask for your vote. I want to represent all of Pinehurst, the residents and businesses as we create our future together."
Claire Berggren, thank you so much for coming and joining us. We appreciate it. We're going to transitionalize now to the council candidates. There are three council candidates running for two seats in Pinehurst. Lydia Bosch is the first of those three, so good morning, Lydia.
Good morning, Bill.
Love to hear about you, your reasons for running, your inspirations and motivations.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and speak to you and speak to the voters.
Pleasure.
Many of you have heard of my background. I was a CPA, and now I'm a licensed attorney in North Carolina. You also may have heard that my love for Pinehurst began in the 1980s when I first visited this gem of a village. In fact, Pinehurst meant so much to me that my soon-to-be-husband, John Bosch, and I came here from San Francisco almost 25 years ago to get married in the Village Chapel. Soon after that, we moved here. Today, I'd like to share with you issues that are on my radar and my thoughts for addressing them. The issue that seems to be on the minds of most of you is growth. Traffic seems to be your biggest concern. My position on growth is that we need smart growth. This means we must consider all of the implications of growth before approving new development. To deal with our growth issues, I'm considering three approaches. First, one of the biggest implications of growth obviously is traffic. Pinehurst should work actively with our neighboring communities, Moore County, the Department of Transportation, and the General Assembly specifically to find solutions to our traffic issues, both for the short term and the long term. I also believe we need to have serious, ongoing discussions with our neighboring communities to discuss how we handle growth. I've spoken with candidates in Aberdeen, Southern Pines, and Whispering Pines, who all agree we have growth concerns that must be addressed collaboratively. Last, the council should look at impact fees that might make sense to charge for new development. There may be ways we can share with developers the cost Pinehurst incurs for new development projects. Of course, we must also be aware of the constraints placed on us by the General Assembly. I also want to resolve Pinehurst's national landmark status once and for all. I would do that by first understanding completely what our status is and get on solid footing before we then open up meaningful dialogue with the Park Service. I believe we can create a win-win for all parties involved. Short-term rentals is an issue I'm hearing frequently. My approach is to define precisely what the concerns are, meet with other communities who have addressed this issue, then craft specific solutions to these concerns. This seems to be an issue charged with emotion, but I firmly believe we can find a solution to your concerns. Many of you are saying we want to revitalize downtown. I've spoken with many of the merchants downtown who have offered suggestions as to how Pinehurst could work with them to make downtown better for all of us. Let's continue those discussions. Even with the challenges we face, Pinehurst is still a great community with a character and tradition all its own. We are the home of American golf. Recently, we were named by Golf Magazine as the number-two place in all of North America and the only place in the eastern United States for buddies to play golf. What an honor to live in a place with this recognition. Also, some outstanding veterans have chosen to call Pinehurst home and have added so much to our community. Three who come to mind are Josh Payton, who founded Veteran Golfers Association, and Scott Greenblatt and Bill Taylor, who founded Veterans Guardian. Thank you for investing your talents in our community. Finally, my strength is that I work collaboratively with other members of the boards on which I've served, as well as with their staffs, to accomplish our goals. Most recently, I completed six years on the Board of Directors for the Pinewall Properties Association. I was president for the past two years. In that role, I frequently dealt with the concerns of property owners and worked with our staff to resolve those concerns. I also served on Pinehurst Neighborhood Advisory Committee. For two years, I met with representatives of neighborhoods across Pinehurst and with council and village staff to share our concerns. That gave me an inside view of what you believe Pinehurst can do to make your neighborhoods better. I also recently completed 11 years of service on the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Authority. As an authority member, I work closely with the staff of North Carolina State Parks, especially when the authority reviewed and awarded grants for local parks and recreation areas across North Carolina. I'm excited about the possibility of working with a new mayor, three other council members, and the village's exceptional and dedicated staff on the challenges Pinehurst faces. I firmly believe that working together, we can believe in and work toward our very best. I'm Lydia Bosch, and I ask for and would appreciate your vote. For more information, please visit my website at lydiaforcouncil.com. Thank you.
Lydia Bosch, thank you so much for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Our second council candidate is Jane Hogeman, from Connecticut originally. Jane, good morning. Thanks for joining us.
Good morning, Bill. Thank you very much. I moved to Pinehurst in 2015 after three decades as a zoning lawyer in Greenwich, Connecticut. I was honored to serve as a board member and president of the Land Trust in my former hometown. I served on the Board of the United Way and chaired the Community Planning Council for Health and Human Services there, and I was an officer of their Historical Society for five years. Earlier, I was counsel to the Governor's Organized Crime Prevention Commission of the State of New Mexico for four years, while my then-husband was stationed at Kirtland Air Force Base in Albuquerque. In Pinehurst, I have regularly attended village council and planning board meetings, as well as board meetings at the county and in surrounding towns, and have spoken about pending land use matters. I decided to run for council because I care deeply about my new home and wish to do what I can to preserve and enhance this unique village. When all three incumbent council members elected to retire this spring, I knew I wished to use my background in planning and zoning and in land conservation to serve the people of Pinehurst. This is the kind of work I love. Pinehurst's quiet pace, natural beauty, and unique character are worth fighting for, and I think we will need to fight for them over the next few years. Managing growth is the most pressing thing, and it ties into many related issues: preservation of our village character, traffic, and our budget. Growth is expensive, bringing additional demands for infrastructure and services like police and fire protection. And new condos and apartments are expected to be used largely as vacation homes and short-term rentals. Current zoning allows for growth of about 20% or 3,000 people. We should not re-zone to allow additional growth beyond that. Citizens overwhelmingly want to limit growth to preserve the character of the village. At the Fair Barn in June, the strategies that talked about protecting open space, the environment, and wetlands got a total of 900 votes from the public. However, the points dealing with high-density development only got 118 votes. By nine to one, people wanted conservation. Our rural southwestern extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ, is a treasure. I dearly hope we have the foresight to protect it from overdevelopment. Its watersheds, wetlands, and long-leaf pine ecosystem sustain us. We should not permit high-density development there. The proposed western connector, a four-lane expressway through pristine land in Pinehurst's ETJ, was never intended to relieve local traffic on Route 5, and it won't. It was designed to handle traffic from a future buildout of the rural area between Foxfire, Pinehurst, and Aberdeen. But the people of Pinehurst want to keep our ETJ rural. If other towns want to develop their jurisdictions, there are existing roads to the west of Pinehurst's ETJ to serve them. We need to take care of the neighborhoods we already have. Street maintenance, revitalizing the village center, weighing the future of our library, there is plenty to do to sustain our existing neighborhoods. And we should work with the county and surrounding towns to share resources rather than duplicate expenditures. For example, could we offer Southern Pines the use of our community center in exchange for the use of their library? We should work with the National Park Service for needed flexibility in our village center. It is well-known that historic buildings that survive are the ones that have been added to or refurbished every couple of generations to keep them useful. Adaptive reuse preserves history. The draft comprehensive plan proposes a long list of new projects: new parks, new bicycle-friendly streets, high-speed digital infrastructure, more town-sponsored entertainment, along with new fire and police buildings, and possibly a library. But no cost estimates were included in the plan. The difference between a wish list and a plan is fiscal responsibility. We need to listen to our citizens and put their priorities first. In the comprehensive planning process, people said they wanted to keep the character of Pinehurst, revitalize our town center, slow down growth, protect the environment, and control spending. Every judgment and decision I make as a council member will be based on how well it represents the will of the community and how well it serves to enhance or maintain the quality of life for Pinehurst residents.
Jane Hogeman, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Our third council candidate, again, three candidates running for two seats, is Stuart Mills. Good morning. Thanks for coming in. Long time no see.
Thanks so much, Bill.
Love to hear your overview and your vision for Pinehurst.
Thanks, Bill, so much. I'd like to start by thanking WEEB Almangan and Bill Sahadi for organizing this forum. I'm running for the village council in Pinehurst because I care deeply about Pinehurst, where my wife and I have been raising our children. I also think that some of my past experiences have taught me lessons that might be useful to the village. We've lived here since 2006. Bill, you actually sold me our house, as you know. Thank you so much. That was a complicated transaction because the previous owner had gone bankrupt in a Japanese bankruptcy.
Chapter 15.
That's right. But, Bill, you and I worked it out together, and it was just fine.
Yeah.
My wife, Helen, and I have been married for 26 years. We're raising our family here in Pinehurst. It's a wonderful place to raise a family. My youngest daughter, Charlotte, was born in the Moore Regional Hospital and is now in the seventh grade. I drive my kids to school every morning. I attend all of their school activities. I also have a job here, so I drive back and forth to work, and I have to meet deadlines, and I have to work efficiently. So I have become very aware lately of the traffic congestion that is now clogging our streets and making it difficult to get around. Trucks, though prohibited on Highway 5, drive straight through. Cars don't stop at crosswalks. This is a safety issue as well as one of convenience. As you know, we had a very sad fatality at a crosswalk in May in Pinehurst. I will make reducing congestion my first priority as a council member. I personally am not a member of a political party, but I am a lawyer, I'm an accountant, I'm a licensed general contractor, and I'm a fiduciary. I'm the vice president of the Given Moore Library and the Tufts Archives. In the last year, I participated in more than 30 meetings with the village staff and the current council members, including Jeff Samborn, the village manager, John Boldry, who is retiring from the council and has endorsed my candidacy, and Judy Davis, who's a dear friend of mine. Throughout that process, I got to know the current players, was able to work closely and cooperatively with them, and I was impressed by what I saw of the village staff. I also learned a lot about the library and what we need there. I was the principal drafts person of the working group's final report. I'm also a director of the Village Heritage Foundation, as is John Strickland, by the way, and I served for two years as the chair of its Historic Black Commission. From these experiences, I learned about successful public-private partnerships like the Pinehurst Fair Barn and the Pinehurst Arboretum, which are wonderful. And this should be helpful to the village as it considers the way forward on the library and a museum and other projects. I took a deep dive into the history of Pinehurst and have a deep respect for that. I don't want to bore your listeners with everything I've been up to, but I am a director of the O'Neill School and the past chair of its board. I've served twice as the senior warden of the Emmanuel Episcopal Church, and I work as the executive director of the Moore County Literacy Council. For the Literacy Council, I organize every year our largest ecumenical worship service in this county in support of literacy. I bring together congregations from more than 15 churches for that event. By the way, the date is December 12th this year. I hope as many of your listeners as possible can attend. At the Literacy Council, I've designed and brought outside funding into this county for programs that support our public schools and families generally. The Literacy Council has tripled in size in the last three years. Before coming to Pinehurst, I was a partner in what is now our country's largest law firm. I was not a litigator, but a corporate and deal lawyer, so I have a good sense of how to bring parties together and get things done. It's all about relationships and persuasion, and litigation is not something I cotton to. I wonder if our troubles with Taylortown could have been avoided if we'd invested as much in that relationship as we have with our relationships with Southern Pines and Aberdeen. The village council must balance our storied past with the demands of the present and the future. This must be approached delicately, but it doesn't have to be painful. We need to accelerate the rate of improvements in Pinehurst and not be held captive by the squabbling class. The village is very focused, and has been, on planning and zoning, which is a good thing. This is not surprising, since our current mayor, who is retiring, has a background in planning and zoning. Those issues are important, and I won't shy away from them, but I would like to spend more time talking about the needs of actual people, including families and retirees. For instance, we need to embrace the Pinehurst Elementary School, doing all we can to make that one of the best schools in the Old North State. That is good for our children, and that is good for our village generally. If these ideas appeal to your listeners, I hope they will vote for me on November 5th or sooner at early voting. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Stuart. Again, Election Day is November the 5th. The village of Pinehurst has two candidates running for mayor, Claire Berggren and John Strickland, and there are three council candidates running for two seats, Lydia Bosch, Jane Hogeman, and Stuart Mills. We're glad you had a chance to listen, and if you have any questions, please contact any of the candidates at their website. Thank you. Welcome back to the second half of the show. The second half of the show is going to be All Things Southern Pines. We're going to be speaking with the two mayoral candidates, Carol Haney and Craig Morrison, and three council members, John McLaughlin, Paul Murphy, and William Pate. First up is Carol Haney, who is running for mayor. And Carol, you've been on the show before. We would love to hear your overview, your vision, your motivation, your heart for Southern Pines. Good morning.
Good morning, Bill, and thank you. And my heart is Southern Pines. I am Carol Haney, and I am running for the mayor of Southern Pines. We have many military families here, and I too was raised in a military family and have lived nine of my first 17 years overseas. I was born in England, graduated from high school in Okinawa, and lived everywhere in between. After finishing college, I married Mike, and we moved to Southern Pines in the early 80s. We raised our two daughters here. Both are Pinecrest High School and UNC Chapel Hill grads, and they have given me four spectacular grandchildren. Being raised sort of homeless, when we moved to Southern Pines, I found my home. I latched on to Southern Pines, and Southern Pines latched on to me. In my community, I've served on many boards: Coalition, Habitat, Rotary Past President, 20-plus-year Brownson Choir member, you'd think I'd be better, Coman, Sister City, Peenec, and Weymouth. And I was the chair of Keetmore County Beautiful for many, many years. As for my leadership in Southern Pines, I was chair of the Southern Pines Appearance Commission. During my chairmanship, we added the brick walkways, the welcome signs, the downtown pots that we had a partnership with the master gardeners, the brown Southern Pines banners, and lots of things to do with trees. Obviously, the aesthetics of our community are very important to me as a citizen and as a real estate professional. I have a rather unique perspective. I am a former first lady. When council member feels left in 2016, I was appointed to the council, and then I successfully ran for council two years ago. I serve as your town treasurer, and by the way, our finance department has won many awards over the years for excellence. I'm also the town treasurer, excuse me, the town representative to the Triangle J.Cog with representation from seven neighboring counties. In valuable exposure on how to govern, sharing ideas and solutions. I am the town rep to the local tri-cities, which is made up of Aberdeen, Pinehurst, and us. Great dialogue, sharing ideas, boundary issues, recycling concerns. Great dialogue, sharing ideas, boundary issues, recycling concerns, planning, and most recently, the occupancy tax. Our three most pressing issues to me are infrastructure, inclusiveness, and growth. Infrastructure. We received an MEP report, which is a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing report from an independent study who looked at sixteen of our properties. The total cost of these repairs was $2 million. We devised a schedule of repairs and a replacement, addressing, prioritizing, and financing based on zero to three years. The Douglas Center was a top priority because it had safety issues, and those repairs have been completed. Now on to ADA and fire exits. And yes, we are looking at parking. We are studying each block in our precious downtown area and working with a developer who hopefully will partner with us in upgrading our municipal parking lot on Bennett Street. Inclusiveness. Recognizing the us and the them, the council formed two task forces. The first, the West Southern Pines Economic Development. We just allocated funds to hire a DUII from UNC Chapel Hill School of Government. Phase one will look at the overlay, including lost city, and deal with land ownership and the viability of development in West Southern Pines. The second task force is the Military Task Force, in which I serve. We wanted to make it easier for newcomers to find their place here in places where they can volunteer, get involved, and feel at home here. And of course, the third is growth. Sustainable, but not destructive. We work tirelessly to keep the flavor of our town and to protect our precious jewel, our downtown, which is one of our greatest assets, plus all other things that make us special. No empty storefronts, two new schools, great restaurants, arts, Parks and Rec, award-winning library, Sunrise Theater, kids' movies in the park, First Friday, Horse Country, a new fire station, a new healthcare facility coming, flat tax, working well with Aberdeen and Pinehurst. We are all in this together. If we had a crystal ball, just imagine what we could do with the future of our two empty school sites. Performing arts, business incubator, town headquarters, town hall, to name a few of the possibilities. Now imagine a large green space for all to play, train, run, just be, for the young and the old and everyone in between, and I would like to see economic balance on all of Pennsylvania Avenue. Now back to reality. I am thrilled that Carlisle Street will connect to Morganton Road. Experience counts. Count on, Carol. I'm accessible, prepared, informed, recognize and respect change. A lot of good things come from managed growth without compromising the quality of life. Southern Pines is the town, but the people form the community. It would be my honor and privilege to serve as your mayor. Vote November five.
Carol Haney, thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you so much for the opportunity and for allowing all the candidates to come and to speak to you so people have, are informed on what their choices are.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Bill.
Our second candidate for mayor of Southern Pines is Craig Morrison. Craig, good morning.
Good morning.
Would love to hear about your background, your overview, your reasons for running, and what the residents of Southern Pines can look forward to.
Yeah, absolutely. First, I want to thank you, Bill, and WEEB for allowing us all an opportunity to talk about why we're running and what we envision the future of Southern Pines to be. I think it's important for people to know what effect municipal government has and on people's daily lives. So my name's Craig Morrison. I'm running for, to be your mayor of Southern Pines. The world changed September eleventh, two thousand and one, and so did my life. Two weeks after the terrorist attacks, I enlisted in the United States Air Force. I had my heart set on serving our nation and forever preventing similar attacks. I led an esteemed career as a combat controller in the special operations community, and I was what my nation needed me to be at the time. In those eleven years, I was thrust into situations that I feel prepared me for this position that I seek as a mayor of Southern Pines. Leadership, planning, risk management, active listening, integrating, collaborating, and solving complex problems are just a few of the skills that I've honed on my active duty. My family and I were extremely fortunate to call the Sand Hills our home for my entire career. From the moment we stepped foot in Southern Pines, we knew that this would be our permanent home. I'm a dedicated husband and father and a pretty avid volunteer baseball coach for the Town of Southern Pines Recreation, Parks and Rec. And I've been a successful and invested business leader in the community for the past seven years. One of the most valuable lessons I've learned in life is that you have to stand for something. I stand for integrity, service, and excellence. I focus on three main areas of improvement for Southern Pines: growth, economic development, and conservative fiscal management. First, I believe our solutions for growth in Southern Pines should be proactively planned. Over the past five years, Southern Pines has grown. It's been a manageable rate, probably one and a half to two and a half percent annually over the past five years, and that's about two hundred people a year. However, with visitors, Southern Pines regularly has over thirty-six thousand people in the town limits. I think that's, you know, pretty evident when, you know, you look at downtown or really anywhere around Southern Pines. In those five years, downtown Southern Pines has transformed into a pretty vibrant business district, and it now relies on the revenue of those visitors. I think that transformation also equates directly to, you know, increase in home values, especially downtown. So it's, you know, important to keep that vibrant and desirable community down there. So I think preserving, you know, the things that make Southern Pines great and ensuring that we're still attractive for visitors in the future is a priority, should be a priority for the town. Currently, Moore County's top three industries are healthcare, hospitality, and retail. That's why I believe with the right proactive planning in Southern Pines, we can lead the way in economic development in Moore County. Technology, military contracting, and medical device development are perfect opportunities for diversified economic growth in Southern Pines. Southern Pines can be a leader in Moore County if we actively plan and recruit for the development of a campus of some sort, which would house these types of businesses. This would be an incubator for new local businesses, higher-paying jobs, increased town revenue, and less reliance on retail and hospitality industries. With our younger generations focused on technology, it would also create a reason for our children to call Southern Pines home when they enter the workforce. I believe in conservative fiscal management. Most of our neighborhoods have been established, you know, for a number of years, and there's a limited amount of land, you know, to develop in Southern Pines. The town budget has seen an increase in revenue because of growth over the past few years. I think that we should be cautious that growth will eventually end and that there'll still be increases in expenditures, especially, you know, you'll have increased payroll, continued maintenance on facilities, and replacement and repair of infrastructure. Planning to ensure infrastructure and town facilities will be able to handle the future needs, I think, is paramount. You know, really to sum it up, I think a lot of people view growth as negative, and I think when they, when they're viewing that growth, they're viewing the negative aspects of it, like traffic or lack of parking in town, or additional crowds at events. I think if we proactively plan, you know, for future growth and take care of the problems that we have today with the growth, that people view it more positively. And I think, you know, businesses already view it positively, and we should view it in our budget as positive. You know, our revenue has increased because of that increased tax base, but our expenditures have also increased at the same time. I've heard some great ideas with things that we should do with the new, with the schools when they're going to be available and the new schools open. And I think that we need to plan for the future and, you know, can really consider our spending on new projects so there isn't a shortage of revenue for the next five or ten years. Again, thanks for having me. If anybody has any more for, or questions, or, you know, wants to know more about my stance on things, you know, you can visit CraigMorrisonforMayor.com.
Craig Morrison, thanks so much for joining us.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for having me.
We're going to speak to, there are three council candidates in Southern Pines running for two seats on November the fifth, and our first guest is John McLaughlin. Hope I pronounced that right?
That's correct.
I did? Okay. People say McLaughlin, or, okay. John, I understand you're a lifelong resident of the area. Would love to hear your overview, your reasons for running, and what people can expect.
Surely. I'm a nineteen sixty-six graduate of Southern Pines High School on May Street. Played sports, and at that time, our greatest rival was Aberdeen, and it was quite some years. During that period, downtown Southern Pines on Thursday night had a pep rally with the band and the majorettes and the police car in the front, and the two police cars, one in the front and one in the back, and it was a great town to grow up in as a young man.
Right.
I'm not a professional politician. I worked in the construction and development business for forty years. I left Southern Pines and went to college, and there were not a lot of opportunities for college graduates in Southern Pines in the sixties and early seventies. So I started my business career in Raleigh, North Carolina. I worked for state government as one of the first industrial development recruiters and led missions into Europe, Japan, the Netherlands, et cetera, and was involved in some of the first microelectronics and pharmaceutical companies that came to North Carolina. I finished my forty-year career in the construction business and could go anywhere to live, but chose to return to Southern Pines. And I served six years on the planning commission here, the last four years as the chairman. And our most successful accomplishment was the certification and adoption of the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, which provides Southern Pines a map for future growth. I believe very strongly in smart, planned growth. If you look at our demographics and our territorial areas, we were, Southern Pines was not nearly as active as some of the other communities in terms of annexation. So our last growth corridor for Southern Pines is the US One Corridor between Southern Pines and Vass, North Carolina. And I have, as one of my priorities, said that we need to develop a high-tech park for industrial development at that location. I've had some people say to me, "But we're not the Research Triangle Park." But as an example, if you look at Sanford, North Carolina, Pfizer Industries located there twenty years ago, not as Pfizer at that time, they've acquired the plant, but they've just announced a $500 million investment over a ten-year period at Pfizer. There's a very strong training program for pharmaceutical-related technicians at Central Carolina Community College, so there's no reason we can't have an adjunct at Sand Hills and train individuals to work in the pharmaceutical industry. This location works very well for individuals that are not large behemoth corporations, but private individuals who've just got patents on drugs and are now opening up their production facility. Quality of life is great here, and oftentimes, individuals who are privately held or closely held are interested in quality of life for their family as much as they are the average wage in the community, et cetera. That is a priority for me. I also feel very strongly that we need to address our town hall situation here with the council. I'm not, and I was the first and most vocal candidate to say we need to look at adaptive reuse, at least from a feasibility standpoint, at Southern Pines High School complex as an alternative. It was said to me, "Well, there's potential asbestos in the building." And I said, "If we worried only about that one issue, we wouldn't have Manhattan today in terms of adaptive reuse." That's something that I would like to work on, and I think my construction and development background could be very beneficial to the council in that regard. I'm a big believer in smart growth, and I think with smart growth, we also have to be positive in our regulations and our enforcement here. We need to be perceived as a community that are, that is interested in positive development and good, sound construction practices. I'd like your vote and hope that you all turn out to vote on Election Day.
John McLaughlin, thank you so much for coming in to join us. The second of our three council candidates, and there are three running for two seats, is Reverend Paul Murphy. Paul's been a past guest on the show in many different, for many different reasons. And Paul would love a chance to hear from you and your big-picture overview of Southern Pines, your vision for the residents, your inspiration, and your motivation.
Okay. Well, I've lived here since nineteen seventy-one and was able to
Right.
attend school and all of the wonderful things that Southern Pines has to offer. But more specifically, I've really been impressed with my short tenure thus far with the town from the time I was able to spend with the town manager in the orientation, discovering, you know, the incredible network, all the people involved in the back, behind the scenes, and all of the wonderful things. I've just truly begun to understand public service, you know, as an extension of ministry, you know, just another wonderful thing that's taking place.
You were appointed to the seat that you currently have, is that correct?
I was. I was. Reverend Fred Walden had been the council member at that time, and after his passing, I was appointed there. But I would say I see great opportunity, especially looking at the artistic side. I guess a little biased there as a musician, but looking at the impact of someplace like the Sunrise Theater that it's had on Southern Pines, the ethos of Southern Pines, the economic viability. And as I consider then, you know, that this place, that they've had movies that's opened up the conversation of community, you know, not just in the local community, but kind of anticipating the real award-winning movies, that there is something, there's a great opportunity, I believe, for filmmaking. You know, the whole filmmaking move is coming out of Georgia, heading back into Wilmington. And if we can anticipate that here in this area, we can create opportunities, especially as an academy where young people, you know, might be able to rediscover, or maybe even discover themselves in their, what it is that they have to offer. You know, for many years, this area has kind of been, for some of the residents, just a place where you can be employed in local hospitality areas and that type thing, but with the new technologies that are out there, kids walking around, I'm thinking they're playing games on their iPhones when they're actually creating music, you know. Conversations that are taking place, you know, that are really evident in YouTube now, in YouTube formats, where they are actually coming up some great vignettes. And I'm thinking, "Well, if the kid is acting up in the classroom, you know, put him in the acting class," you know. Put him in a place where they can learn screenwriting and actually become a part of a broader community of creativity and ultimately have their works there at the Sunrise and, you know.
No small coincidence, many of our shows have had arts as an underlying theme in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
To what you're saying.
Yeah. I just think that that's a great way for an individual to really not only discover their innate ability and their self-worth, but to feel that, "I now have a voice. I can contribute to the bigger picture." And I see over the next few years, Southern Pines as being that, you know, very unique place that people will want to come to from all around the state because of the vitality of creativity that's happening. And it's not just, you know, specifically limited to, you know, the filmmaking or just the arts, but in other add- the arts, but in other aspects of architectural, you know, work in any of the others. So I just would love to be a part of that.
Reverend Murphy. Paul Murphy, thank you for joining us. Our final council candidate for Southern Pines is Bill Pate, William Pate. Again, in Southern Pines, there are three candidates running for two seats. And Bill, good morning, and thanks for coming in. I'd love to hear a little bit about your background, your vision for Southern Pines, your reasons for running, and just a real nice overview.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Bill for this opportunity. My name's Bill Pate, and I'm really excited for this opportunity to hopefully serve the town that I really love, and that's Southern Pines. I was born and raised here in Southern Pines, and I went through local Southern Pines schools, graduated from Pinecrest High School, and I was valedictorian and senior class president there during my time. After high school, went to UNC Chapel Hill, where I earned a business degree, and then followed that with an MBA and a law degree from Campbell University. For the last fifteen years, I've been an attorney in private practice, and I currently work as a partner at Peyton Scarborough Law Firm here locally. And one of my law partners is my father, Daniel Pate, and that's, it's been a very rewarding and rich work experience working with him. It's been a lot of fun. So when my wife Maria and I started to have a family, the draw to come back to Southern Pines was really great. So we moved back, and now have four children. Their ages, 12, 10, 7, and 5, and we are just, we're thrilled to be raising them here in Southern Pines. It's a lot of fun. Since coming back home, I've committed to serving my hometown area, and I've been involved with a variety of groups, such as First Health Foundation, our local Eagle Scout Board of Review, Southern Pines Rotary Club, my home church, Southern Pines United Methodist, as well as a whole bunch of classroom and athletic activities that my four kids are involved with. I've really benefited. I'm currently the Chairman of our Town of Southern Pines Planning Board, and I've really benefited from that experience through servant on the board, and then some training seminars with that. It's given me a lot of insight in the front row seats, sort of the procedures of planning at the town. And it's also given me a great familiarity with our town governing documents, which are our UDO, our Unified Development Ordinance, and our Comprehensive Long Range Plan. So it's been an excellent ability to get to learn those. As a council member, you know, I'll be passionate about the town, and I want to be accessible, and also I think it's important to hear all sides of any issue. Looking at issues, I think probably the, one of the most, if not the most important issue I feel for Southern Pines is maintaining our current fiscal health. Southern Pines has done an excellent job of maintaining a very strong conservative fiscal management through budgeting and planned spending. I think it's important to keep that for our town's strength. You know, like individuals, towns do face unexpected costs and increasing expenditures, but through planning and being prepared for those, the town can stay in good financial health. I think that's vital. I do feel that my business background and in operating a law firm will aid me, and having some experience to have a continued conservative fiscal management for the town of Southern Pines. Kind of tied to that, the second issue I feel is important to maintain and upgrade our existing infrastructure. For, Southern Pines has fortunately done a very good job of making needed improvements and not deferring them, especially in areas of water production, distribution, sewer collection in our town-owned roads. Being able to plan for and address for those expenditures is important. One thing, currently, Southern Pines has 15 core buildings that provide services to us as citizens. Those require maintenance, and the town recently underwent a facilities analysis, which sort of outlined those 15 facilities and their needs, and I think it's important the town use that. And so as, to make, again, a pre-planned, a planned, not a reactive approach to expenses for maintaining those buildings and the infrastructure. One final issue I feel is important, and this is, everybody talks about, is growth. Southern Pines has been very fortunate. We have had a fairly stable growth rate, and that's enabled us to provide high-level services without unnecessary or onerous tax increases. So I think, though, that we must make sure that our growth is balanced and high-quality. You know, smart growth is important, and fortunately, with our UDO and our CLRP, our two governing documents, we have a great blueprint that will help guide continued growth here in the future. I do want to point out, though, these documents, they are not static, and they can be changed. So I think as a town, we have to be very open to making adjustments should some anticipated situation arise. So just sort of my vision of Southern Pines. I loved growing up here. I was, I didn't hesitate at the chance to move back home. Sort of my goal is, when my four kids graduate from Pinecrest one day, I hope, and I know that it can be, the same inviting town that welcomed me back. I mean, we've got great citizens, and a wonderful quality of life here in Southern Pines, and we can keep that going. So I guess my vision is that the current generation or future generations, like I did, and for my kids, will still see that and still feel welcome, and absolutely, the structure's in place, and Southern Pines can do that. I ask for everyone's vote on November 5th, and I really do hope that I can serve the town I love by being on the council.
Bill Pate, thank you so much for coming in and joining us. And in closing, I'd just like to thank all the candidates who've come in, both from Pinehurst and from Southern Pines. These are all dedicated individuals who love the communities they live in, and are answering the call to serve. Election Day is November the 5th. I think it was said best today by one of the candidates, that local elections have more direct impact on our daily lives than lots of the national elections that we read so much about and watch so much TV about. Local elections make a difference, and we hope everyone gets out to vote on the 5th of November. Thanks for listening today. This is All Things Moore County.